All right, I'll call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. We are starting a few minutes late this evening because we just swore in one of our newest Bussiris police officers, Logan Randolph, and I just want to publicly welcome him to the department and wish him well in his career here. First item up tonight is public participation. Does anybody have anything for the Health and Safety Committee? You know the drill, sir.
Right off, 210 Ethel Street. And once again, my questions are for our law director. Getting a house put on the list, is there a formal way of doing that or paperwork or how does that work if someone has a formal complaint?
You could file like a property maintenance complaint with my office, or you could give me the address.
That was going to be my next thing. We have a property maintenance inspector that is?
Yeah, Gordon Grove, yeah.
He's in charge of going around looking at abandoned houses and whatever. And so I need to get on a list to where he would see that so he can go look at something? Is that what you're saying?
So basically, you file and they have the paperwork in the mayor's office where you would write like the address and what issues you see, or you could just call him or call myself and we'll write it down and because he comes back March 13th, I believe. We usually lay him off over the winter.
Okay, another quick question. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what the city ordinance law, whatever pertaining to furniture on front porches?
It's a...
I kind of do in the back of my head, but I wanted to make sure.
Frowned upon, but I think it's technically legal.
I beg to differ. I think there's an ordinance that says that any outside furniture has to be made for outside purposes. You can't have inside furniture, couches, recliners on your front porch. I don't know where to find that to make sure.
Right, so we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, so everything that we looked through is referred back into the International Property Maintenance Code. And I know Gordon and I had an issue last year on Poplar, Poplar or whatever the one by Pizanello's. Some guy had upholstered couches on his porch.
I could drive around the city and show you dozens of them.
Right, but yeah, that's something we'll look back into, but I know that his thought in discussing that with him was provided that they are not falling apart. So if you have junk furniture, you know, a recliner that needs to be thrown away.
Yeah, opinions differ as far as junk furniture. So you don't think there's anything on the books that says you can't have a couch on a front porch?
I don't think so, but I'll look at it. I don't know 100% off the top of my head.
Okay, thanks.
I can tell you, I can tell you in the past when Roger Moore was mayor, he wanted us to pass an ordinance to not have furniture on the porch, but we had a lot, we had some discussion on it. I won't say a lot, but we had some discussion on it.
Columbus, not round campus, I think they have.
And well, the issue is, you know, who's to say, you know, what if you had something on your porch that your neighbor didn't like, you know? It really opens a can of worms. I'm not sure what the, I think that's what started the discussion of adopting the Property Maintenance Code, and I'm not really sure what that says. But you can look that up online, I believe. What are we on, 2012 or what?
Yes.
2012 Property Maintenance Code, international property. I didn't bring my stuff, I usually carry it with me, but.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Anybody else, public participation for health and safety? Seeing none, we're going to move on. You have before you the minutes from the February 9th, 2023 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second?
I have a first by Mr. McKeever and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Those minutes are approved. Next, we have the, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, this is a notice of legislative, notice to the legislative authority, which is us, that the Horseshoe Bar has went through an ownership change, and so GND Incorporated doing business as the Horseshoe Bar Restaurant. So basically, we, as always, have to go through these and just decide if we want to request a hearing or not request a hearing. And I'll ask the law director, is there anything that you know of that you believe we'd need to request a hearing for?
No.
Police chief answered the same, and so...
And they've been operating since April.
Almost a year.
Almost a year, since April, the new owners under the old license with the agreement with Mr. Whiparina and Mr. Massey.
Yeah. So I need a motion either to request a hearing or not request a hearing.
I make a motion to not request a hearing.
I have a motion to not request a hearing by Mr. McKeever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. All right, pass that back over to the clerk, please. Next up is Taxi Cabs, Mr. Gernert.
Thanks.
So I didn't really go through and do too awfully much. I think that this was passed in 1943 or 1963, and back then the fee for one cab was $15, and then every subsequent cab that the same person registered was another $5. And that includes not only registering that actual vehicle, but also registering the driver. So I revised that, and you guys can tell me that that's too much or not enough, but $50 for your first vehicle, as well as $25 for additional cabs to be operated. And then I added language prior to issuing a license, the vehicle must actually be inspected for, to make sure the same is safe for in operation, free from any material defects which would make it hazardous. No person shall operate a vehicle without first obtaining the proper license. So you, even if you're licensed and your cab is licensed, you're not allowed then to hire Mark to drive your cab unless Mark has gone to the police department and been issued a operator's license for a cab. The first violation of driving a cab while not having a proper city-issued cab license would be an unclassified misdemeanor punishable up to $1,000 fines and up to $500 community service. If the individual has had more than one conviction for a violation of this section within a three-year period, violation would be a misdemeanor of the fourth degree, which would then make it jailable up to 30 days and a fine not to exceed $250. That sort of comes from the Ohio revised code, driving under suspension laws. Usually, most of the driving under suspensions are unclassified misdemeanors, and subsequent ones are heightened, you know, to hopefully encourage cooperation and compliance. The insurance requirements, I know maybe Kevin has a opinion different than, but I kept it at what it was. I looked at some surrounding jurisdictions, and I don't know the insurance industry that much, but they had in the old one, $250,000 for one person, $500,000 for injuries to more than one person, and $50,000 for property damage in any one accident. And then there would have to be a clause that the insurance company would have to provide the city with a notice that this insurance is set to expire if it had not been renewed or if it had been dropped. Some jurisdiction indicated something about a $1 million blanket policy for all occurrences. I don't, I mean, I don't know what you guys' thoughts on that would be, but.
You want some input now or you want to finish?
Up to you.
I'll speak on that now if I could.
Yes.
My opinion, and it's just my opinion for that, but I think the 250, $500,000, $50,000 is extremely too low. I believe you should be asking for a $1 million combined single limit, so CSL is the abbreviation used for that, $1 million combined single limit. And what that does is those three numbers, the 250, 550, that $1 million will cover any or all of those. So the 250 is per person, $500,000 is per accident, and then the 50,000 is property damage. You've seen the prices of a new pickup truck today? If you total that new pickup truck, that 50,000 is not even going to come close to covering. So I think you look at that $1 million combined single limit, which is pretty much industry standard now. And also, you would probably want to put some language in there that is a commercial vehicle policy, not a personal auto policy. And that really is going to stem for extended liabilities. So I think we want to most definitely word it that it needs to be a commercial vehicle policy and not a personal auto policy. I think I would put not a personal auto policy also in there. That would be my recommendations on the insurance part of it. Other question I wrote down, that operator's license is issued by the police department?
Yes.
Okay, is there a fee for that?
That's included in your either $50 first one, or if you're a taxi cab operator and you want to get one of your employees' license, then it would be in that $25 second license.
So if I own one vehicle, I'm paying $50 for that vehicle, and I could hire 10 different people to take turns driving it, and they get their license for free?
They get their license for $25 per person.
Per person, okay. So that $50 isn't for the vehicle, it's for the?
The vehicle and the first owner occupy.
Should there maybe be a difference in the, split those two up, have a price per vehicle and a price per person?
Yeah, I can work on it.
I think that makes sense.
Cleaning up language.
Otherwise, you're going to have so many different scenarios that you're going to say, well, this is my second guy, but my third vehicle or whatever. I think if you just had a license fee per vehicle as well as a license fee per driver, makes it a little more clear. My other question was on that inspection, the inspection will be done by our Bussiris Police Department, similar to how they do the golf cart inspections? And have you spoke with Mr. Burzby about that? Is that kind of what the route they want to go, or do you want to have it done, you know, as a state patrol inspection?
The state patrol no longer does inspections other than buses. I don't know, they have a very slim number.
Commercial vehicles don't fall into that?
I could not find where they would inspect taxi cabs, but buses and some other vehicles.
Okay.
I can talk to the sergeant or the administrator out there and ask them if they would do that.
Yeah, I think it just makes it a little bit more taking that out of our hands.
Yeah, and I know when I was a kid, they used to come by Winford and inspect everybody's car, but I'm completely out of that.
Yeah, okay. Those were my questions.
Not trying to throw a wrench in this or anything, but.
Oh, it's in progress.
It's too late.
But I'm gonna.
But what about, and I don't even know if there's any here in town, but the Lyft, Uber drivers and things like that, how does that fall into this? Does that fall into this? I don't know, so.
I know from an insurance standpoint, they do have a separate classification. You can use a personal auto policy with an endorsement for ride sharing, and so, and I think that was kind of, the whole thing was set up probably to get around all the regulations for taxi cabs, honestly, and the licensing and stuff. So I don't know that we have the ability to look at them the same.
It's going to be difficult to manage based solely on the fact that if I get an Uber from Marion to Bussiris and they're here once, dropping me off, and then they run. But there is some, and I'll look at it, but there is, I mean, obviously, it's not a unique situation. There is some law out there pertaining to the Uber ride share type stuff.
Taxis would be the same, it would be, you know, the point of pickup, you know, and I think maybe if you don't have that, maybe you worded in there that any taxi cab that has its starting point within the city limits, because I see the taxis from Tiffin are here all the time, you know, and they're bringing people from other places to here, and we don't really have any jurisdiction on that.
Right.
You know, I guess my suggestion, and I haven't looked at it, but you look at a larger city that's going to have just an atrocious amount of your Ubers and Lifts, like Columbus, Cleveland, somewhere like that, maybe look to see if they have anything on their books, and if they don't, that kind of answers our question. So do you want another round of meetings to go to kind of clean that up a little and?
Yeah, I would like to.
Solidify a couple points.
Add some stuff and fix before, and bring it back before we actually move forward.
Yeah, if there's a standardized form that the police department's going to use for inspection, I'd suggest maybe including it as an exhibit into the legislation.
Right.
Unless that becomes problematic, if they want to change it, then we have to change the legislation. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
You sort of, under this, give the police department and the administrator or the designate, the mayor, or not the mayor, but the chief of police designates sort of the authority.
Yeah, it's kind of like the parade permits and stuff. We don't need to see it because if they want to change it, maybe just, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then I took.
Maybe for conversation's sake, let us see what they're using right now, or what they intend to use, but not included in the legislation.
Right. I can plagiarize 38.01 display of license and then what it would require to ensure that the people that are utilizing or driving these taxi cabs, you know, don't have any drug convictions, sexual assault type stuff, that they actually have a valid driver's license, just sort of putting some parameters to ensure that people that are operating those are operating those in good faith. I think it's important that we have some sort of language pertaining to that, because if we're licensing them, theoretically could be an argument that we're condoning that as a safe and suitable industry.
Is there, is there any state level licensure as far as the vehicle for it to become a taxi cab? And the reason I ask is I see, you know, the ones that I've seen here, and what did you see anywhere? They've got the name of the operator, and is that something that we as a city need to mandate, or is that something that's done at the state level?
You mean like signage and stuff?
Yeah, if I want to have Brian Gernert's Taxi Cab LLC, you know, if you, if that's the owner of that business, you know, I think it does need to be on there. And then there was also something I saw in one of the larger cities, that fairs needed to be posted, and whether that's on the vehicle or inside the vehicle, I think that's something that when we talked about this a couple years ago, I came across in researching some of the other communities, but I think we want to make sure that the name of the company is clearly defined. And do we want to go as far as to say that it needs to be, you know, something better than just a handwritten Sharpie on a piece of cardboard? You get where I'm going with that, that it needs to just have a little bit more professional appearance?
It's a classy piece of cardboard.
Thank you.
I get what you're saying.
And then likewise, with the, with the fairs, I think that needs to be posted properly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the only other thing, failing to operate a, operating a vehicle without a valid taxi cab operator's license would be a minor misdemeanor, subject to a fine of up to $150 just to ensure compliance and so that we know who's driving these things. I know that there was an accident at one point, and it was a driver that nobody knew who was, knew who was. I don't think that's.
Back to that point, when you're talking insurance, also, you would want language. You'd mentioned if we are notified if the insurance cancels, the wording of that, you want a certificate of insurance naming the city of Bussiris as the certificate holder, and I can get that to you later.
Yeah.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions or further for Mr. Gernert?
The question I had was about the inspections, but I mean, you answered that, so that was, that was kind of where I was going.
Mr. McKeever?
No, it looks good, what you're asking here, that fee for vehicle or operator, all the language you're suggesting, Tom's good.
Mr. Wireball?
Well, just one more thought. What about the SCAT? How does that fall into that?
They're licensed by the state.
Well, that's.
Ambulances and ambulants are licensed by the state. I don't.
I just didn't know how far we're going with that.
Yeah, that would fall under the Ohio Medical Transportation Board for those, and they're inspected very stringently.
You could call these privately owned and operated. I mean, those are owned publicly.
Yeah, those are.
Kevin, I have one. So when these are inspected, they'll be issued serial number, I mean, some way to identify this vehicle belongs to this, and it's going to be big enough to be seen, it's going to be big enough to where they can inspect.
It has to be displayed in the.
To that point, the Ohio Medical Transportation Board does one. If you look in the back of any privately owned ambulance, it's a sticker by Y-Big that gets put in, it has to be in the back window of the ambulance. I think in this instance, you would probably say you want it to be put in a prominent location that's the same for every vehicle, so that way if our law enforcement knows, they're not having to scour the vehicle on all four corners of it. So if we say, you know, that sticker, if we create a sticker that needs to be placed wherever.
We have been issuing and permitting taxis. It's just one of those things, too, that Officer Lieutenant Burzby thought that it may be beneficial if there was a little bit more enforcement mechanism, because we have laws that were not really enforceable.
Right.
And so that's the first go-round, was to throw in some language there, allowing him to issue citations and other things, but we can clean it all up.
That's easily seen and easily stopped.
Right.
And you know, you use a prominent color that changes every year, that kind of like the stickers on your license plates for that same.
We do the same thing for the West Polvers.
Yeah.
Same sticker.
Yeah, so it'd be neat to do them, you know, side by side, so the colors might be the same, unless that makes it even, I don't know if it's easier or harder, but yeah.
And I will say, it's not like we have 35 taxi services, so the cops kind of know that taxi cab drivers.
Sure, yeah.
A little bit.
All right. Anything else from you?
No, I'm good.
Shut up now.
Any open projects that any of the three of you wish to bring up this evening?
No.
Okay. Any public participation for health and safety? Seeing none, we will recess health and safety at 6:24 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, February 23rd, 2023.
I'm going to call Public Lands and Building to order at 6:25 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and Ciaran Sherrill, myself, Chair. Do we have any public participation for public lands?
Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. I believe on the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, is the parking lot back here, it used to be the impound lot?
Yeah, the fenced-in area.
Yeah, the fenced-in area, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Going through CVS to pick up prescriptions, the fence that's along the alley there is blowing freely. So if it is being used as an impound lot, there's nothing to keep anybody out. Coming home from Galleon tonight, I look over, I'm coming down Irving Street, and the fence facing Irving Street is blowing around. So if we're going to have fences, we need to maintain them. That's it, thanks.
Can you say anything to Service Director about this?
I just have to.
Okay, so, okay, well, I'll follow through all of this stuff.
Okay, does anybody else want to?
Miss, let's talk tomorrow.
You're okay?
Right off, 210 Ethel Street. Regarding the Pines Reservoir, when I was up here a couple weeks ago, I did make contact with like three different groups, three different people. I spoke to a gentleman from Mansfield that is, let's see here, he's with the North Central Land Conservancy, North Central Ohio Land Conservancy, which I don't think it's the one that the city has spoken to already. He told me you may have spoken to the West Creek Land Conservancy. Does that make?
That sounds right.
Does that sound about right?
That's correct.
And I talked to Josh Dyer today, and going back to the whole West Creek Land Conservancy thing, I guess the county commissioner was involved with that, too, and a bunch of stuff went down, and there was a deadline for some grants or a grant. And Josh was approached, I guess, days before the deadline to this grant, and he had no idea what was going on, so he wasn't up for getting involved with it, but he says he is still up for discussion on the pines. The guy that I spoke to from Mansfield, Eric Miller, I believe is his name, said that this West Creek, I think they have grant money like every year, they do grants every year, it's not like a one-time thing, according to him. I also spoke to a group in, I think that's in charge of like Clearfork and Mohegan, they place trails over there. I'm waiting for him to get back with me. The North Central Ohio one, he emailed me some stuff tonight, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'll forward it to one of you guys, Dan, or I've been speaking to Aaron here lately.
Thank you.
Yeah, the guy from Mansfield said something about Clean Ohio. I think that's where he said all the grant money's through. I think it's a group called Clean Ohio. I think that's all I got. So there's grants out there.
That's right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Aaron, could we leave that as an open project in hopes that Ray will come back in two weeks and share kind of updates on what he's learned?
We'll definitely leave it as an open project.
You welcome to add your agenda?
I would like.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it.
When I spoke to Josh Dyer tonight, he wasn't aware that you could actually walk around the pines. He thought it was, he said when you acquire something like that, people want to see that they can use it. He wasn't aware that there was access all the way around it, which there is. I go out there all the time. And once I mentioned that, he sounded a little more interested, and like I said, he said he was still up for discussion on it, but he needs to be kept in the loop this time, I guess.
Definitely.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, Ray. Is there any more public participation? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the approval of minutes from February 9th.
There was, I.
Oh, I guess it was.
Sorry. West Creek, West Creek did contact me, and I referred them to Susan to set up a meeting with you, so. So has he reached out to you? Okay, good deal. That's all you have.
That's why I pulled you up.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the February 9th, 2023 Public Lands and Building Committee minutes as presented. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Harrison, a second from Mr. Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the minute's been passed. Next on the agenda, we have city property uses.
So that lot that President Vermillion was talking about, the fenced-in area, currently has that Verizon Tower and a couple little accessory buildings. They had reached out and Service Director Wagner, as well as myself, had been negotiating with them, and then obviously, Mr. Finkhauser filed an injunction, and so we're still currently moving forward in the court. But then one thought would be transferring that property to the Community Improvement Corporation so as to allow for the Community Improvement Corporation to extend the lease for Verizon. And one benefit or one reason that I would ask counsel to think about that, not that, you know, you guys do what you want. The lease that we had years ago, and I don't remember if it was in 2012 or what year it was, but in that is very specific language that we can only develop pursuant to their development plan, and we have to offer them, you know, the first ability to extend their lease, and we can't put in other equipment that would harm their equipment or interfere with their signals. I'm not sure if we're even allowed to put in other service providers. And so typically, you would have the public bidding process, but because of the language of the original lease is so restrictive in what we're allowed to do with it, the bidding process seems burdensome and untenable. So one way we could help the city by making, I think it was approximately $1,000 per month in additional rent, and they wanted 16 feet, I believe, so they would move their fence 16 feet to the west, and we would still have another, I don't know how many feet that is, but a significant portion would still be open for storage of, obviously, city vehicles as well as impounded vehicles. Something to think about, I don't, I mean, obviously, that would be up to you guys, but it would be one idea so that we could move forward with the lease with Verizon.
How big is this space? It doesn't look very big, that's what I'm asking.
55 by 159.
So it's 55 by 159?
Yeah, probably 55 feet wide by 159.
Is that the space they already have?
No.
No, that's the total parcel.
Okay, so how much of that space?
It's probably twice that, it's probably 110 by 159, because this is only one parcel and there's two parcels. I don't know what they currently have, probably what, 20 feet off the back to 30 feet off the back?
You'd have to do a lot split and parcel it out, then turn that over to the CSL.
Well, you could, but those two are already split lots as well. The fenced-in area is already its own parcels.
Yes.
Just a thought. Just a thought.
And what are you thinking we should do with it? Give it to the C I C and sell it or rent it? I mean.
No, so we wouldn't sell it. The C I C would manage it, enter into a further lease with Verizon. And then the C I C, in the language of that, would be paying the city back the rental income that they made. Based upon the expansion of the Verizon lease, which would be, I don't know what we're getting now, but it would. Fifteen hundred a month, and I think the additional space, they were going to pay us a thousand dollars a month. So it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars a month for, I don't know, forty feet, sixty feet of that back lot, forty feet of the back. I don't have the numbers, but.
Couple of questions. With the C I C taking that over, if we look, if we go that route. Currently, that income can only be utilized for capital improvements, correct?
What income?
What income we're receiving now for the rent, or can that go anywhere?
No, that just goes into the general fund.
Will that change, or can that stay the same when the C I C is reimbursing the city for said?
You could put an earmark on it wherever you.
Okay, so where the money goes wouldn't change, the ability to.
No, it would still come back to the.
So that wouldn't be a change.
You would write it up so that the city would benefit from the lease and the C I C would not keep that money. It would be an economic development. Parameter for the C I C, and then the money would come back.
That was my biggest question.
Yeah, they wouldn't keep the money.
The other thing is, is the insuring the property for liability is that if the C I C is managing it, are they required to have their own insurance, or does that fall under the city's insurance? Do we know?
Probably would fall under the C I C, and that would be an expenditure that the C I C would have to make out of those proceeds, and then. Maybe the rest would go back. I had not thought of the insurance. Thank you, Mr. Insurance. Yeah, I don't know. I assume that the insurance company would make the C I C take out the policy if they're the owners, and then that would be.
Because we would actually transfer through the auditor.
Right.
You know, the owner of the property would now be the C I C if we go that way.
If we go that way.
That they would.
Right.
Unless the C I, because the C I C really is not a subsidy of the city.
It is not.
No, it's not.
So they couldn't fall under their insurance policy.
Right, and you could put a deed restriction that says the C I C can't do anything without, anything further than. The Verizon lease and the extension thereof without council approval. I mean, you could.
Is the C I C allowed to operate if they are leasing the land from the city similar to as if it was a sale? Similar to what we did with the North End Fire Station, we leased it to the ambulance district, and then the ambulance district then sublet it to the private ambulance company. Is that a provision that we could do?
I'd have to look at that.
That would be probably a lot more favorable, because then, you know, A, you retain the ownership and the insured interest.
But when we do this, I mean, if we lease it or to anybody, don't we still have to go out to bids the first time?
That's the whole reason the C I C, the C I C can circumvent that.
But if you lease it to the C I C, it's the same idea as leasing it to Verizon.
No, because the city is allowed to lease to another public entity, which is why we leased the fire station to the ambulance district. They were another public entity. And then they were then allowed to sublease it. But if we were to have subleased it directly to the private ambulance service, we would have had to go out to bid.
The C I C was significantly created to foster economic development. And so by allowing the C I C to have it, you can, you don't have to go through the public bid process.
I'd be curious to find the answer to if we could.
Lease it. Yeah.
To the C I C and let them manage it.
Right, absolutely.
Is there a time restriction that this Verizon's looking to make a move on this? Is this like urgent nature or?
No, I mean, they've checked in with me about once a month, and I've been talking to their lawyer. Who joined the case in common police court, but just thinking long, big picture, you know. We have a piece of property that has a lease that significantly restricts development, and we also have that same group that wants to further develop it. So how do we get to that, that goal?
Would it be in the city's best interest to put it out to bid to see if T-Mobile or somebody else would want it? Like, will it be willing to pay more? I mean. If we're looking at opening that lease to begin with.
Right, so you could, but Verizon has very specific language in their lease about what we can do with it, who we can rent it out to, and they have the right of first refusal.
And when is their lease up?
I don't know. It gets reviewed, renewed every five years, so we probably have another three years on the old one. And they have the right to renew it without, I mean, it would be, I'd have to read the language, but I don't know that we have the right to. It was originally, I think, renewable for up to thirty years. I'd have to pull it back out, but. I think it was renewable every five years for a period of thirty years before we could tell them to pack up and go home.
And how many years do you think it's been?
Fifteen, maybe.
Fifteen, twenty.
I was gonna say, I was looking at twenty. I mean, I think we're starting to get close to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whenever four G came out.
So long ago.
That was the first four G around.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, we're looking at this. These are also the other things that we need to look at, because if they lock into something super low. What would the city actually be getting? I mean, what are we losing out on? And knowing our money issues, it's probably not a good idea to. Close things up without looking.
I guess.
So right now, we're just waiting on more information on that.
I guess I differ with your opinion, though. If we're already getting fifteen hundred and they're offering another thousand, twenty-five hundred, you're not going to get that from anybody else that's going to come in.
I don't know.
Plus they'll ruin the tower.
Yeah, and then that, that serves our citizens.
I'll read the lease again, obviously, and we'll talk more about it next time.
I'd put it on the agenda, but check with Brian and make sure he's got the affirmation beforehand. Because if not, we don't want to like put him on the spot where he's like, hmm, not quite ready.
Hmm, interesting question.
We've just done a whole lot of questions at him. Whether or not they're all going to be ready at the next meeting is a different story.
Verizon Tower lease.
Alright, so while we're waiting on that, do we have any open projects we need to talk about right now?
None for me.
Any more public participation? Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn at six forty-two.
Plating Committee, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll call plating to order at six forty-four P M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, and Terry Spiegel and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for plating? Okay. We will proceed. Approval of the minutes for February ninth, regular plating committee meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, I have a first from Dan, a second from Terry. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Next topic, ODOT removal, ice and snow. Mr. Mayor.
Talked about that earlier, the meeting's on Tuesday, and ODOT is now, has an initiative that. They don't have the gentleman's type agreement anymore. They actually measured out with the work that they do versus the work that we do for them, and. And there will be some payment to ODOT, starting in two thousand and twenty-four.
Due to the state auditor requiring.
Yes, yes, that's all. We actually had Mr. Weber here. We actually had Mr. Weber over here to try to, you know, you know, see what the problem was, and, you know, he just said it comes from Columbus, so.
Are there some things that we do for them, too?
Yeah, we do. We.
We will be charging them.
To make it even wash?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So as we've just found out, we do need this as a resolution. We just need approval for us to send it to finance.
I'll make the motion to send it to finance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Any open projects? None? Any public participation? Okay, with that, I will adjourn at six forty-seven P M.
Economic Development Committee, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'd like to call Economic Development to order at six forty-eight P M. Members present, Ciaran Sharrock, Steve Young, Mark McKiever, and myself, Chair. First up is public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the February ninth.
I'll make.
Economic Development.
I'll make the motion to approve as is.
Alright, I got a first from Mark. A second from Mr. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next up is the Local Board of Tax Review. I'm assuming we need to. Vote on the three members listed, which is Joyce Schiffer, Lisa Whited, and Larry Shutter. Can I get a motion to approve this?
You're gonna make it? Go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
First from Aaron, a second from Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay.
So we. It's called the Local Board of Tax Review.
Okay.
So I thought my motion was legislation.
So you're gonna go back.
Since it's tax review, do we not need to make that an emergency because the tax?
I think we do. I'll amend it to an emergency, because we should have been doing this already, and.
Alright.
It's nice to have me.
Second the amended motion as an emergency.
Okay, just for good faith, as the amended, are we all in favor on that?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Alright, any open projects anybody wants to discuss? Okay, and last is public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at six fifty.
Hold on. Service Committee, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'd like to call the Service Committee together to order at six fifty-two. P M. Members present, Steve Young, Ciaran Sharrock, Brenton Potter, and myself, Chair. I would like to open up for any public participation from anybody? Seeing none, we'll have the approval of the minutes of February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular service committee meeting. So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Young, second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Okay, anybody got any open projects on the agenda they want to bring up?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Good enough. Seeing none, any more public participation? I will adjourn at six fifty-three.
Finance Committee, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I will call Finance Committee to order at six fifty-four. P M. Members, Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair, are all present. First order of business is public participation for the Finance Committee. Anyone? Okay, we will move to approval of the minutes from February ninth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. That carries. Next is the ODOT removal, ice and snow. We discussed that a little bit in, what was that, in plating?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. In plating, and I think we just need to make a motion to.
Yeah, I had one other question that came up. Talking about charging them, do we need to give you any authority to do that, or you have that inherently and you're good? Perfect.
So I guess we need a motion to.
Go ahead. Yeah, what we'll do is put it in court together as soon as we get a bill from.
Yeah.
It won't be, they probably won't have a bill till, I would say, a year from now.
Yeah.
Well, and this is starting twenty-four.
July, yeah.
And this work is going to be basically.
So next winter.
Yes.
Okay.
It may be longer than you.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to request a resolution.
Can I ask you something on that? What about the removal of a deer on the road out there? Is the city going to have to do that, or will the state still do that?
Yeah, well, there's the city, the city only owns a few areas there that bypass, so it's a chance of a deer getting there. I think the state would do that, yeah.
Well, who knows?
And charge us to do it.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
We did keep the meat.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, I know there's a lot of them getting killed out there, so. Good.
Mark made a motion to, for resolution.
For the state to agree with the state.
An agreement, yeah, an agreement.
Agreement. Do, is there? For the snow removal, any billing from the state.
Is there a time constraint requiring emergency legislation?
They got until July first, so.
Okay, well, I didn't know a lot of times ODOT wants it next week.
It didn't say.
I don't think that was.
Okay, I'll second Mark's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll be looking forward to that next week. Get started on it. Enterprise reimbursements, I think that's Cali's.
I'm asking for two ordinances to amend the two thousand and twenty-three budget. The first one is regarding the reimbursements from the enterprise funds. There was a memo in the packet during the council meeting on Tuesday, and I believe it's attached tonight, too, that shows the breakdown. To refund those listed expenses, it would cost eighty-three thousand, nine hundred, eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents per fund to be charged to Water Works Sewage Disposal. Solid Waste and Stormwater Utility Funds. That puts us about seven thousand dollars short in those funds for reimbursement, and that's what I'm asking to appropriate. Due to the actual expenditures, there should be seven thousand appropriated to fund seven oh one, specifically Water Works Administration Other Uses. Seven thousand appropriated to fund seven twenty, specifically Sewage Disposal Administration Other Uses. Seven thousand appropriated to fund seven fifty, specifically Solid Waste Management Administration Other Uses. And seven thousand appropriated to fund seven sixty, specifically Stormwater Utility Administration Other Uses. The appropriation sheet found in the packet shows how the seven thousand impacts the fund down to the object. And for the second piece of, or sorry, the second ordinance, it would be regarding the loan in discussion for the Kiwanis payment for the splash pad. We would be appropriating ninety thousand to the general fund, specifically Program Seven, General Government Land and Buildings Contractual Services. The appropriation sheet found in your, at your seat shows exactly how the ninety thousand impacts the fund down to the object.
And then this is, I guess, turning to the law director, this is a promissory note here.
Yeah, so kind of like we discussed two weeks ago, we would appropriate that money from appropriated funds down to the, out of the ARPA funds to the public lands outside contracts. And then we would also authorize the mayor or service safety director to contract with Kiwanis to loan them the ninety thousand dollars. That money would have to be bonded, so the Kiwanis would have to purchase a performance bond. In the contract, it talks. The purpose of this fund shall be used exclusively to build a splash pad improvement at Allmiller Park. Project would be directed by the Kiwanis. They would continue to make annual payments in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, beginning on the December first, two thousand and twenty-four, and continuing every December first thereafter until they have paid it in full. They have the right to prepay that, so if they had fundraisers and they were able to pay it back more quickly than that, great. If they don't make their twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six date, interest would begin to accrue on that at five percent. In the event they are able or unable to pay, they would be in default, and we would have all of the remedies available at law to pursue. Collection of that money. They would be charged late payment fee in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents on any late payment if we didn't proceed with the default. And I think the most important part, which I already talked about, but they would be bonded through a insurance company to ensure that the money is handled. bonded through a insurance company to ensure that the money is handled properly. And I don't know that their board has passed that yet, but I would ask, subject to their board making that appropriation and authorizing the mayor or the service safety director to enter into that promissory note and lending the money.
So now we have a lot on the table here. We've got the enterprise funds, so I guess we'll need a...
I'll make a motion to request emergency legislation for the appropriations that the auditor has presented for Funds 701, 720, 750, and 760.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll work on that. And the next would be the appropriations for the splash park, or for the, yeah, the appropriations for the splash park, right? Do we have a motion for that?
Could I?
Yes.
I got a couple of questions. That money is coming from the general fund currently?
It will be appropriated to the general fund.
From, okay, so the Fund 271, I think it was?
It'll go from ARPA funds to land and building outside contracts.
All right, a couple of questions, and I'm going to speak with all due respect, but I've got some tough questions I want to ask. In your statement you released to the media, you mentioned that, "Do we want to use the ARPA funds to cover the overtime expenses needed for the fire department for public safety?" How can we sit here and look at doing this right now and answer that to the citizens that have given an outcry of support for that? And that's a sincere question of how, what am I supposed to say to them?
This is money that's just being loaned to, it's going to come back.
Yeah, but not this year. We're in the financial crisis this year.
We have until the end of 2026 to spend all the arpa funds. So they're going to start paying it back. It could come back. We're not going to have a pool this year.
If I could interrupt you real quick, because that's my next question. Why would we not want to take $70,000 of this 90 to open our pool this year rather than loaning the money? And I, you know better than anybody else knows that I was a member of one of the civic organizations, and I believe wholeheartedly in the work that they're doing, so this in no way reflects how I feel about them. But in this instance, when times are tough and we've got reduced staffing at the fire department, we're not a bank at this point. You know, this is money that I think we need to utilize for what we've got to do, and I get...
So you're going to vote against a splash pad?
I'm not done speaking and asking my questions yet. I've got people that I answer to that have asked tough questions, and I'm asking the tough questions now. You know, yeah, I understand why we want the splash pad. I do. But when, when, go ahead.
We got $1.2 million for the ARPA funds, rest of the plan. We've spent all of it so far on safety forces, on equipment, on salaries, and nothing from that money has been invested at all in improvements in the community. That money should have been earmarked as much as possible for investments in the community. So at the end of the day, over 90% of that money is going to go to safety forces. We can afford to give 10% of it to investment for these kids that want to do the splash pad, so that's all I'm going to answer.
And that's fine, and I understand your point. Again, I ask those questions with respect. I guess the only thing, you know, I had one of the residents that called, and the way they worded it, I kind of want to just share that thought that they shared with me. If we don't support our public safety and we lose people and our insurances ratings go up, and so businesses don't want to come here, people don't want to live here, I think that's a quality of life issue that's no better, no worse than what we're doing with the beautification projects and the legacy project. I think it all goes into the same basket, and I think we have to look at it as similar.
We already spent a lot of life. We spent $20,000 a year on a tree program.
Right.
What else?
Well, the park budgets and things.
We spent over $5 million. I think we best invest well in safety. We spent $5 million a year in the safety forces. We spend less than $100,000 a year on a pool. We have no money that we invest for any improvements in the park. We have to go to rotary, we have to, literally have to maintain this, we have to go to Kiwanis for this. We underfund our parks. We have to have a balance. If you're going to have people living here, you have to give them a reason to live here.
I don't disagree with that. It's the argument, we have the same argument, that the funds are short right now. We might differ on where this fund should be spent.
Because we had to pay a $300,000 back fire that you voted on.
I did.
That we recommended you didn't vote on it, and we're now, we're $300,000 short in that, in the general fund. We told you that the money was going to be short, you know, so we want to, we'll have that discussion.
Yeah, no, I don't want to sling mud back and forth. That's not the reason we're here.
I'm asking for a city council to make, 10% of the, not even 10% of the ARPA money that's going to come back in a couple of years. We have an opportunity to do something really nice that's going to cost the city a cent. We're just going to have to front a little bit of money. I think it's a wise thing to do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Sure. That's up to him.
Sure.
Here we go, President, Local IFM. Mr. Mayor, I heard you say something about the $1.2 million you haven't invested anything near the community. Myself, as long with a lot of citizens, would probably beg to differ on that, saying that you taking over EMS at a perfect time when we were getting funds from the government was probably one of the biggest investments of your political career, was bringing EMS to the city. So you just sit there and say that we haven't invested in the community?
You mean the most expensive investment?
No, no, biggest investment to the community, the citizens were important. Yeah, it's bringing EMS into the city where we're not, we're not getting subpar service from a private service. I think that you bringing EMS into the city, along with members of council and the chief, was huge for this community.
You guys are great reviews, there's no argument about that at all. I just think there's, I think kids in this city would benefit by a splash pad. It's going to be funded by Kiwanis. Their own generosity, their hard work, it's all we have to do is advance them some money, and we'll get it back. I think it's an easy thing to do.
Just, I only thought of it now. I meant to ask you earlier, and I didn't. Did the YMCA have any response to running the pool for us?
They don't have the financial, that was all we did.
So they declined?
So, did we, I thought that this was, I thought this was in the budget, the splash pad, the money was in the budget. Now, are we just moving it, was it in the lands and buildings? Now we're moving it to contractual services?
The underground last year, the underground, $55,000, I think it was.
$55,000, yeah.
We did the underground part of it last year.
Yeah, we did that, but I thought at budget time, we knew this was coming, we didn't do that. Was it in the budget? All right.
We did discuss it, but it was one of the earmarks of the ARPA fund. It didn't get moved out of that fund, is I think what happened with that.
Mark gave a long, Mr. Mayor. One reason to do the Kiwanis is that they want to do something, which I am one of the members, and they all want to do this, but it's also, it prevents us from having to go through a bid selection and cost overruns where we, where the Kiwanis can go privately and get somebody...
By going through Kiwanis, we don't have, they're contracted with Kiwanis, and so it's going to, you're going to get a lot nicer splash pads with the same amount of money. The builders ready to go, they're just looking for, they have Kiwanis to put half, so they, right now, they have money tied up in their investments in the foundation, so if we can get that to them, and we can get this on emergency, we can have a splash pad in by the end of May, we're pretty close to it, so. Every one of you can come out for a photo op, one of those, that will be huge for the city.
With an empty pool in there.
You have $70,000 you want to loan us, or?
We can't do what Mr. Myers said?
Which is what?
Use the money that we're going to use for the splash pad to keep the pool?
The splash pad doesn't cost anything to the city, but the pool has about $70,000, $80,000 yearly cost. Splash pad has zip costs, there's nothing, no cost to the city to run. We don't have to pay lifeguards, we don't have a water expense, you know, it's free to run.
What's the estimated maintenance cost of a splash pad next year and the year after?
It's this year, they come and install it, next year, they take, they come back and take everything out, store them for us.
I said, what's the estimated cost for the...
I'm getting there. This year, there'll be no cost. The same thing next year is $1,600. They come in, they maintain, they put it back in, and they store it in the...
That's total maintenance?
Yep.
So we're going to have, like you said, an empty pool with a splash pad? Correct?
Well, hopefully next year, if either council goes, you know, if the levy passes, or if they do something with the out-of-time credit, you know, then we'll have money to open our pool, too.
If I'm not mistaken, I was, I heard in a meeting before that the levy was totally going for safety forces.
Yes, it is.
So what's I got to do with the swimming pool?
Well, safety forces in the general, the money that's available for safety forces in general fund, there's a certain amount that's for safety forces, and then a certain amount of the general fund that also goes to safety forces, so.
But the levy is 100% safety forces, right?
Yes.
What you're saying is the levy will be leaving the stress on the general fund?
But not make up 100% of it.
Right.
Yes.
Mayor, why couldn't any of the ARPA money be used to open the pool for this year?
That's up to you. That's completely up to you guys.
Have we asked, I'm curious, has there been any discussion or anybody thought about reaching out to like the community foundation to see if they have any grants that might assist the Kiwanis in a similar fashion, what we're looking at here?
Kiwanis is reaching out themselves for grants.
Yeah, the board of directors and presidents working on it.
Right, but I mean, has anybody asked the community foundation?
I can't answer, I'm not...
They have a first, I do know for a fact they have a community foundation, so I don't know what they're, if they even have it.
Anything else? Well, so...
I'll make a motion as an emergency for the appropriations of, for the, from the general fund, the $90,000 to the contractual services, and a motion as an emergency to, for the promissory note loaned to the Kiwanis for the splash pad.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. If it passes, so, so we'll, I guess full council will have to decide on that, right? So, next, I lost my spot here. Hold on a minute, I think, I think we got... Oh, okay, here we go.
Minutes for the stuff that they...
Oh, here we go. Enterprise, okay, other, Ohio Municipal League, okay, what do we have on that? Do you have something on that, Mayor?
Yeah, there was just a resolution from the, from the other day, Susan, do we, do you have a copy of that?
That the one we all signed?
That's the one we all...
Did you decide if adding any further wherethes?
Oh.
If that's the case, I'll make a motion requesting emergency legislation to use the sample that the Ohio Municipal League provided to us, requesting that the state take a look at the improvement or the increasing the local government funds. And I don't know if anybody has it, that they wanted to read it, but we were delivered it by email, and it would be a resolution that we then as a council would put forth, asking, you know, the state to increase those funds.
I'll second that.
I can forward it to you. Yeah. And that was as an emergency.
You had a first and second, you second?
Yes, sir.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we go to the Stetser, Stetser?
Stetser.
Oh, Stetser Water. Stetser Water.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're looking for legislation to authorize the Safety Service Director to pay the county for the, for our share of the Stetser Road Water Line, an amount of 600, not to exceed, $611,380. That road will all go down Stetser. We can finish on Stetser, it'll go south on 602, it'll, it'll loop, connect there.
Connect that old 30?
Around 30, yeah. 330.
330, yeah. Okay, so that's where we're going next, huh? Okay.
That's where we're going next.
Does that need to be an emergency?
Yes, it's, as soon as we hear back from the EPA, which is, could be any day, so we can get going on it.
I request emergency legislation allowing the service director to, is it entering into the contract with the commissioners?
No, just, we already have kind of legislation for the authority for Mr. Wagner to, for us to pay the county.
Okay, so emergency legislation authorizing the service director to pay the county for the contract that's already out there?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have splash pad again here, I think we just discussed that, didn't we?
Yes.
Anything else on that? Am I afraid to ask? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. He did.
Open projects, we have any open projects? We want to discuss about finance, okay, or any other public participation for finance? If not, we will adjourn at 7:18.